Good evening. It's 6:30 on October 24th, 2023. I'm calling this session of the Bastrop City Council to order. City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, realign the regular session, or call the executive session, or any order of business at any time prior to adjournment. We're very privileged to have two young individuals lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Navea Espino and Gael Hernandez. If y'all will step up here. Come on, don't be shy. We already talked about it. Step right up. American flag and our Texas flag. Everybody, please rise. It's on y'all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as its own. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one nation, indivisible.
Let's give these two youngsters a round of applause. And Al's promised he's gonna take pictures of y'all, so y'all turn around. Act like y'all know each other. There you go. Outstanding. Thank y'all very much. And if you'll remain standing where however invocation given by Reverend Reggie Gridine, one of our chaplains. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Let us pray. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Father, your name is holy. So, Father, we stop and recognize your presence. And, Father, I just want you to know, to live in a world full of chaos, it is an honor and a privilege to live in a diverse, peaceful city of Bastrop. Father, and it is so beautiful to be able to just hover up under a mayor, a mayor, a city mayor, that invokes your presence and want to hear your word. Now, Father, I just asked you to be with these council members as they sit in these seats and serve their people. Father, we thank you for their service. And, Lord, even the, even the city attorney, Father, we just thank you for them. We thank you for their service. Now, Father, as we continue to move on in the session, I know you to be the prince of peace. I invoke your presence in this room right now. I ask you to give us peace in our hearts and peace in our minds. Father, as people stand at this podium, I'm asking you to touch them as they speak to the leaders of our city. And then, Father, I'm asking you to touch the minds of the leaders as they make decisions. You are good God, and there's nothing too hard for you. And you told us to ask, and you would answer. You told us to seek, and we would find. And then, Father, this evening, we ask you to deliver us from the evil one. All these things we asked in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Y'all may be seated. We're gonna move real quick. I have a short mayor's report. Colin, if you'll throw up that first picture, please, sir. I was really privileged to entertain a group of Bastrop homeschoolers here on Wednesday, October the 11th. They were very interested in city government. They were an enthusiastic group, as were their parents. I want to thank Chief Rosales, our interim assistant city manager, for his input during our time here. Every one of those kids that are pictured up there asked a question, and they thought it was really cool to come sit up here. We ran out of chairs, but that didn't deter them in any way, shape, or form. If you'll go to the second picture, Colin. On Thursday, October 12th, I was honored to be invited to Family Crisis Center's Women Leadership Luncheon. The theme was to inspire, empower, and thrive. There was outstanding testimonies and presentations given by our youth guest speaker, Kristin Arias, as well as keynote speaker Jenny Helbig. Our mistress of ceremonies was our own police chief, Vicky Stefanik. Music was by the great Hannibal Lucchumby. I need to commend Kathy Hensin, the Reverend Bernie Jackson, and the Family Crisis Center staff for the outstanding things they're doing in our community. Up in the picture, our keynote speaker is on the far left, and the youth speaker, an outstanding young lady, is standing next to the only male up there, which, if y'all don't know, is me. Now, the third picture. On Friday, I was privileged to read and present a proclamation designated in October to be the City of Bastrop Pinky Promise Month as part of the Bastrop County's Cares Initiative to Fight Cancer, along with many partners within our community. I was honored to be able to present the proclamation to two leaders in this endeavor, Dr. Linda Wilson and Dr. Patricia Alfred. These doctors are doing wonderful work with our, with our communities, our various and diverse communities here in the city, and we really appreciate their work. And that is it for my mayor's report. In checking with council, I believe we have one council member that has a report tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Bastrop. So, I do want to mention a couple of things. It's been a minute since we talked about what's going on in Bastrop. The music festival has come and gone, and I wanted to congratulate, visit Bastrop, and everyone who participated in the organization of that event. I love some music, and we had a lot of people downtown. I was way up past my bedtime a couple of nights there, but I enjoy music festivals, so I'm glad we have that in our community. Wanted to just mention that the Addams Family has returned to the Opera House. They've already started selling out, so if you didn't get to see it the first round, here's your second chance. Go online and get some tickets for that through, they're running that show from the 28th through the 5th. I wanted to send a special shout-out to Kathy Danielson. During our TML conference, I participated in the annual golf tournament, which kicks off the conference. And on a whim, I told her I needed some trinkets for some gift bags, and she produced 300 of those, so I appreciate her jumping right in and helping me out with that. The golf tournament raised $70,000, which will go towards scholarships for African-American students seeking higher education. Couple announcements for the library. If you're interested in quilting, there are classes available and limited seating. I think they're running through November. They, the library did a phenomenal job with the solar eclipse day. Like, it was, there were so many people. I just thought I was gonna drive in, grab some glasses, and come out. It was, I drove in in the middle of the eclipse. I almost missed it, but they did a wonderful job hosting that for our community and providing those glasses, and it was, it was just phenomenal to see that happen. I don't think I ever actually used the glasses to look at it. They will also be doing the Boo Bash in front of the library, so if anyone's out for that event, please visit the library. And then, on the last library note, they will be hosting a museum fair to promote information about history and culture in Bastrop. Anyone interested in participating in that via Boo, volunteering, or just you wanna go, please contact the library for more information. That'll be sometime next year. I also attended the Family Crisis Women's Leadership Luncheon. Always a worthwhile event to be part of, and blessed, we are blessed to have an organization in the community that provides refuge for people that suffer from domestic abuse and violence in their home and in their, in their lives, period. So, I'm glad that that's there, and Chief Stefanik did do a wonderful job hosting that event as emcee. I attended the 75th anniversary commemoration of the landmark lawsuit that integrated Mexican-American students into Central Texas school districts known as Delgado versus BISD. Lot of living legends in the audience that day, including Minerva herself, so I was glad to be able to hop over to that event. I think I had three events that day, and I was able to catch the first hour of that. Really good testimonials of Hispanics living in Bastrop during that period that could talk about what Bastrop was like growing up as, as a Mexican-American. So, I'm glad that, that that was an event that was well-prepared, well-organized, and informative. I also attended, in honor of Hispanic, Hispanic Culture Month, the folkloric dance performance at the Performing Arts Center. There were students there from Cedar Creek. They have a group. And other organizations that participated in that event at the PAC. I think it was weekend before last. Lots of beautiful, bright colors. I love music. Lots of beautiful, bright colors, energetic audience. It was just really, really fun to be part of that crowd and part of the celebration for the Hispanic community. And I think that's it, Mayor. Thank you. Oh, I did want to mention, we met with lots of enthusiastic and passionate people about the rodeo, and I wanted to, I couldn't stay long because I had a conflicting meeting, but a lot of people showed up with a lot of great information to help us make some decisions we need to make going forward. So, I appreciate that being organized and the opportunity for those people to be able to speak and tell us more about what the rodeo circuit is, so we can help out in that effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Madam City Manager, you have something you want to add?
I, I have a rather lengthy city manager report.
Good.
I don't. It's a, it's a few slides. You do have the lengthier report in front of you on the dais. It does contain some confidential information, so we will not be sharing the entirety of the report online, but we'll give some high-level snippets. And I'm gonna go by date order, so some things that are more important are at the end because they have a date in the future. So, first one is October 26th. We will have the final determination on the grant funds for the Old Iron Bridge, so that is approaching on Thursday. We will be celebrating, or we will be crying. In any event, as many of you know, we did program some funds in the budget to be able to make repairs to the bridge regardless of the outcome of the grant. We have engaged Hewitt Zollers, who is an engineering firm specializing in bridges, and they will be on-site tomorrow to begin doing some assessments as we begin with engineering preparations for an assessment of probable costs and eventual bid out for the repairs on the bridge. If we are not funded for the grant, I expect a December potential January call for bonds in order to begin the borrow necessary. So, Kathy mentioned Boo Bash, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Lee mentioned Boo Bash. We do have rain expected in the forecast, and so we have alternate plans at the convention center should rain hamper the event that is slated for the downtown area. We do have a significant amount of road closures from 3:00 to 8:30. We will be closing the road in the event or not event of rain. I mean, we don't want to be putting up barricades and then it, you know, doesn't rain and we weren't set up for the event. So, the road closures are pretty significant, so I want everybody to kind of take a look at what's going on. The northern block of Main Street from Chestnut to Farm, Spring from the Library at Pecan, Pecan from Cedar to Spring, Water from Farm to pass the Recreation Center, and then Alley A from Chestnut to Spring Street. We will be honoring the tradition of Bastrop before and taking the event down Pecan. We're gonna make the turn at Spring and then capture the northern portion of the Main Street. We end up at the library at Trunk or Treat. Along Spring Street in front of the Opera House, we have various nonprofits set up in their tents. He'll be giving away information and some treats and some games along that area. So, it should be a very, very fun event for the kids, and we want to keep praying for no rain. At least for that little while. We need the rain. We need the rain. We talked about the Arbor Day celebration. That is November 3rd. You'll have a proclamation later on in the agenda to recognize Arbor Day. Moving on, Proposition A is on the ballot. Early voting, I believe, begins next week. Oh, it started this, what day? 23rd.
Yep.
I'm a day late. Started yesterday. So, for those of you who aren't aware, it attempts to reprogram the half cent that's allocated to the EDC, the Economic Development Corporation. It attempts to put 3/8 of that to City Streets, which is about $3.3 million, and 1/8 of that stays with the economic development of about $1.1 million, and that equals workforce development and small business development. In November, the 14th and the 15th, we have the code rodeos. Those are 9:00 to 4:00 and 9:03 respectively. We will provide lunch. Now, I've received some concerns about the development rodeo being held during the day and not enough time for folks to attend. Rest assured, oh, interested public. There is a December 16th date that is a Saturday, that that will be held at the Convention Center from 9:00 to 4:00. And then, on January the 13th, those are evening events also that'll be held at the Convention Center to give folks an opportunity to attend, whether they can attend a day event or a night event. Moving on into the industrial district, as economic development, as we've talked about, we finalized the Accutronic. You may have seen a lot of this information in the Austin Business Journal or Community Impact. It is a firm that specializes in federal government contracts, especially drones, so they are building a 20,000-square-foot facility and a minimum capital investment of $4 million. What's exciting for us is there's at least 50 full-time jobs paying over $56,000 a year. That is in their performance metrics. They don't get their money all at one time. It'll be divvied over a period of years to ensure they can meet their performance metrics. Next slide. We continue with Burleson East and Reed Ranch. The preliminary plat for Burleson East has moved forward. The planned development district has also approved. We continue to work with Reed Ranch. Many of you expected it to be on the agenda today at their request. We pulled it. It'll be on your November 7th agenda as we try to work out the traffic impact fee and the overall assessment that'll be assessed to Reed Ranch. We are still continuing with Blakely Lane expansion and utilities that would come down 969, make the turn at Blakely, and then eventually end up at Old Austin Highway. So, we continue. We've engaged survey crews to already begin some of that work. Meat-butter type stuff. I met with the school district. I meet with the school district regularly, have met with the county on residential development coming our way. There have been estimates that the city of Bastrop will double its population. It will double its population in a very short time period. I think we're gonna get to 40,000 residents sooner than folks actually think. Val Verde is 1,600 to 2,000 LUEs. Adelton, which many of you knew is West Bastrop Village, 1,300. There's a development that we annexed, some land that we annexed as part of a development agreement that has an additional 2,500 potential. We have Ironwood, which is Shiloh 309 area. That's another 1,100. Lover's Lane was the 25 acres we annexed. That's 50 townhomes. And we have Pine Forest 6, which is about 396 lots. These are actual developments in the pipeline. We have many, many more where we have done pre-development meetings that are not showing up on this list. So, which brings me to the really scary part for staff. As we begin expansion for our utilities, you all know our wastewater treatment plant is overdue by a year. In November, we should begin functional testing, and that means running water through it, making sure things work. We have a final punch list that is probably taller than me. Including in that punch list is still the HVAC issues we hope to resolve. We have a meeting with the engineer and legal teams on November the 8th, so I'm hopeful that we will have some sort of resolution moving forward from that point. We are planning an executive session meeting with the council next council meeting, which is November 7th. Just a reminder, because of the code rodeo, we're not meeting on the 14th. We've moved it up to November 7th. But we do need to have some pretty significant conversation about that wastewater treatment plant, because total plan for the plant is 10 million gallons a day. Phase 1 is only 2 million gallons a day. With only a portion of those developments that I showed you up on the screen, we're already at 1.2. So, there is, there is a speed in which we need to move, and we need to move quickly. But I'm trying to balance the impact to the residents and how much we borrow in debt, et cetera, et cetera. We got the water treatment plant back online. As we had discussed, there were some concerns that was also going to fall out, out of the project window. Because of the number of developments and the number of water taps that we are creating every single month, water is becoming a more and more valuable resource, not just to us, but to the other water providers in the area, including Aqua and Correx and the water control districts. So, we did resolve the easement issues, and we are still expected to have some water coming out of the wells in May of this year that will help alleviate some of the pressure and demand on the existing wells. And the plant is expected to be fully operational piping water in January of 2025. We are expected to have a drainage utility discussion. We gave you guys the information, I believe it was about 30 days ago. We need to continue that conversation after the code rodeo, after we see things at a 50,000-foot level, and you understand transportation, drainage, streets, et cetera, et cetera. It's a, those are big, very, very big bills. And the transportation impact fee, we're looking at possible adoption in December of This is the map that's in my office that changes every single day. Each one of those little dots is a water connection, and we have more and more and more and more every single day. That map is filling up, so if you ever feel like drawing, come into my office. And then, lastly, we have Sit with Still this Thursday at 7:30 in the morning here in council chambers. Come sit with me, bring me your concerns. We'll have coffee and maybe some donuts to talk about it. Questions?
Any questions for our city manager? Council? Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on to item 4C. It's a joint resolution of the county of Bastrop and the city of Bastrop. It's gonna be read by our county judge Gregory Klaus on November 11th in front of the courthouse. I'm just gonna read a portion of this. I'll let the judge read, read all of it on the 11th, as stated before. Veterans Day, November 11, 2023. Whereas the Bastrop City Council, Bastrop County Commissioners Court, come together on Veterans Day to pay tribute to the men and women who serve our great nation with distinction in the United States Armed Forces, both in peacetime and in war. Now therefore, be resolved, Bastrop County Commissioners Court and the Bastrop City Council hereby join together to honor all of our Bastrop County veterans and encourage our citizens to join the celebrations of Veterans Day 2023. For this other proclamation, I'm gonna ask our Director of Public Works, Mr. Hancock Curtis, you want to introduce your associates?
Yes, Thomas Martinez, our crew leader at Arbor, City Arbor, Perry Moore, our Recreation Manager.
Thank you. Proclamation of Bastrop, Texas. Whereas Arbor Day is observed throughout the world in many languages and cultures, whereas all of Texas, from towering pines to majestic oaks to scrubbing mesquites, the many trees of Texas are beautiful and prominent features of our unique and breathtaking landscape. And whereas, as Texans, we value our trees and the benefits that provide each and, each of us every day. Benefits like clean air, clean water, improving our health, abating stormwater, and even saving us money on energy bills. And whereas, we encourage people in our community to plant trees and celebrate them on the first Friday of each November on Texas Arbor Day. And whereas, this holiday for trees is an opportunity to teach fundamental lessons about the stewardship of our national resources and caring for our environment. It is an opportunity to learn what each of us can do to keep our community trees healthy and vibrant, and is a time we can pause to appreciate trees in our lives. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and enjoyment. Now therefore, I allow Nelson, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, to hereby recognize November 3rd, 2023, as Arbor Day in the city of Bastrop. Let's give these folks, they work really hard. I give a presentation to the Rotary Club today, and they've done some great works within our community. They put up birdhouses and bike racks, and if y'all see them throughout the community, and you know people who own the Rotary, like our own council member Meyer, let them know we appreciate the work that they're doing. But while I was there, they gave me a plaque to give to our public works people to designate where the birdhouses are placed outside of, or in Fisherman's Park. And I just thought this was an opportunity for me to present this in a somewhat formal way to our Director of Public Works, Mr. Hancock.
Thank you.
Could've been quick and leaped over the counter, but that would not have been a pretty picture, so. We have no work sessions or briefings. We have a, we've already ran over the presentation of the manager's report, correct?
We did.
I wanted to make sure there wasn't nothing there, because that's really good information. We now move to item number seven, citizen comments. Madam City Secretary, do we have anybody signed up?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. No citizen comments. We will move to an extremely short consent agenda, or to our consent agenda, I apologize. Does anybody wish to pull anything from the consent agenda here on the dais? Does anybody in the audience wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? Seeing no indication, Madam City Secretary, if you will read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, consider action to approve six minutes from the October 10th, 2023, regular meeting. Item 8B, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-39 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024 in accordance with existing statutory requirements, appropriating the various amounts herein as attached in Exhibit A, repealing all prior ordinances and actions in conflict herewith, and establishing an effective date. Item 8C, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-158 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the receipt of a grant from the Office of the Governor for rifle-resistant body armor plates at a total cost of $19,100.00, with no matching funds from the City of Bastrop, authorizing the Chief of Police as the grants authorizing official, providing for a severalability clause, and establishing an effective date. Item 8D, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-159 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the closure of Chestnut Street for the Lost Pines Christmas Parade, providing for a repealing clause and providing for an effective date. Item 8E, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-160 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving an agreement for automatic aid assistance between the City of Bastrop and Bastrop County Emergency Services District Number 2, attached as Exhibit A, and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and establishing an effective date.
Council, City Secretary has laid out the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Councilmember Lee?
Second.
Have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Madam Secretary, if you'll read the row.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. We'll move to item number 9A, or 9 for items for individual consideration. 9A, to consider action to approve $25,000 in hotel occupancy funds to the Festival de la Cultura, a 501(c)(3) organization for Hispanic festival on April 27th, 2024, in Mayfest Park. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a new festival titled Festival de la Cultura. It is a new Hispanic festival geared toward bringing awareness and to address the cultural diversity of the growing Hispanic and Latino population in Bastrop County. As of 2021, the Census Bureau shows an estimated 35.8% of the population in Bastrop within 10 miles of the city center is of Hispanic or Latino descent. We have no such celebration that honors the culture of such a diverse population that stems not only from Mexico but into Central America. So, the festival is not just geared toward
So the festival is not just geared toward Mexican, because I had the question of why aren't you doing it on Cinco de Mayo? Well, Cinco de Mayo is a Mexican holiday. There are Ecuadorians, Hondurans, Cubans. There's a multitude of ethnicities in our midst. We have a wide variety of leaders in the county who are lending their time and energy into planning the festival. It's expected to draw over 5,000 people, and it is planned at Mayfest Park with music and food throughout the day. We originally intended a one-day festival. It is intended to be a two-day festival. By the time the sunk costs of the stages and things are taken into effect, it was decided by the committee that it would be better served as a two-day festival on the 27th and 28th of April. Because it was not a programmed event, it would have normally gone through Visit Bastrop or some other similar venue, but it was not a programmed event in the budget. Additionally, we have not completed the signed agreement for Visit Bastrop, and so the nature of the funds is direct to the city council. It's expected to draw over 175 room nights with an expected economic impact of $700,000. So the committee respectfully requests that the 25,000 be granted from the hot fund account.
Counsel, do we have any questions for our city manager? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from councilmember Meyer.
Second.
I have a second from Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item 9B. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-40, city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter 13 Utilities, adding Article 1314, establishing regulations for wireless transmission facilities, antenna towers, and move to include on November 7th, 2023, council agenda for second reading. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a fairly easy one. Our code is silent on the issue, and we need to address it. So it's an amendment to the code because it does not exist right now.
Thank you. City manager has laid it out. Do we have any questions for our city manager? Seeing none, I'll entertain.
Yes, motion to approve.
Councilmember Kirkland.
Time out.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland.
I had a question. But give me a minute.
We'll get Mr. Kirkland, and I'll call on you.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any pending antennas?
Not an actual submission, no. We have several who have requested information on towers as high as 110 feet.
Okay. And then in here, there is amateur wireless facility and a special permit required for something over 40 feet, but there's no fee specified. And I was just thinking, maybe we needed to fix that. And if there's any other fees or any other permits, I guess.
Will do.
I don't know if there was any other permits called for. I just saw that one, and without a fee attached to it, you know, it just seemed like it was a gap.
We can correct that for the November 7th reading.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Crouch?
I'd had a couple of questions. One was on the removal, that's Section 1314018. It said, mentions that if the thing is not used for six months, that it's considered abandoned and should be removed within 60 days. And the second part of that is that it's removed at the city's expense. So the city would have to take it down. Is that something we want to keep in there?
Correct, Councilman Crouch. It's worded as an option that provides the city the ability to do that?
Okay. And then how do we know if it's not being used? Are they going to notify us, send us notification that it's not being used? Because you would never know unless they notified us that it's going to be out of use. So I'm not sure how we would know, other than lack of service, I guess. Right? So that was another question. And then the locations of them, one of the locations was the PDDs. And so is that something we're going to write into the PDDs that they can have an option to put a transmission tower?
During the PDD negotiations, it's all available for negotiation. One of the things that is super important is to allow that flexibility. We worry about the fall radius and things like that in the city center, for example. And I don't know the answer to your question about how do I know it's not being used.
Yeah, I was thinking about that. I was like, how would we even know that it's not in use because the tower's just there? And it's not like it's got, I mean, it have lights on it, but they're for planes. So just, it's just something that, you know, that I wanted to look at on here.
And so was your other request, the city may remove and then bill the owner? Is that sort of what you were getting at in your question?
Yeah, I just, if it's not going to be used, and it's not going to be used at their discrepancy, why would we want to pay to take it down? Or I guess we could keep it and own it and then give it rights to it to someone else, maybe? But I don't think we should be responsible for removing it if they don't, if it's not going to be in use. Why would the city have to take it down if we wanted to take it down?
I'll look to legal.
Sure. Councilman Crouch, counsel. The way it's worded, it says, first of all, if it's unused for a period of time, it's considered automatically to be abandoned, and it is the tower owner's obligation to remove it. But we have a provision here that allows the city to do that if the owner doesn't do so within a period of time. In terms of how do we know that, that's a technical question that I don't have an answer to today, but I can get one and come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
And I think that was it. I've had notes about the landscaping, and I'm glad we put landscaping around the bottoms of them so that we can kind of, and it's hard to hide a radio tower, but you can at least decorate the bottom of it, so.
Tall plant.
Yeah. Now, I guess we could make a Christmas tree out of it if it's not in use. We could do that. Anyway, that was my questions. Thank you.
On that issue, Mr. Crouch, this ordinance prioritizes, first and foremost, co-location. So before someone can come in and get a permit to erect a new tower, they must first show that they can't co-locate their antenna on an existing tower. The second-ranked priority under this ordinance is stealth. And so if they have the ability to achieve their goals while using something that, I don't know, looks like a pine tree, then that is something that they have to at least try. If they can't do that, they have to document that for the city.
Okay, thank you. I read the stealth part, too, so thank you for confirming that. Thank you.
I've spent a bit of time in New Mexico, and they have them all over the place.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. Councilmember Kirkland, or Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland, you'd like, seeing no further questions now. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
We don't have a motion.
I'm sorry. Move to approve.
Second.
Took care of that. Now, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
I apologize, was the second, Mayor Pro Tem? Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. I thought there'd already been a motion made. I need to keep up. We'll move on to 9C. Consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-161, the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving an interlocal agreement to support 911 geographic information system database management with Bastrop County, including addressing any boundary updates as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Barron.
Good evening, counsel. Do y'all have any questions about this resolution?
It's pretty straightforward.
It's pretty straightforward. It's just a renewal, and we've had two changes. One was the date change of the renewal, and the other was dedicating myself as the primary contact with Julie Summerfield with the county, that she's the supervisor, manager for 911.
Certainly an update. Thank you.
Mayor and counsel, you have not met Robert yet. Robert Barron is our GIS analyst who's been with us about maybe six months now. It feels like six years with as much as we're throwing on him. But Robert comes to us with a great deal of experience, having worked with the county before and other state agencies. And so the partnership with the county is now more just than a piece of paper. It is actually us sharing information. A good example of that is the master transportation plan. When the county gets theirs done, it'll overlay on ours, and we'll be able to see pluses and minuses. We are so busy in the GIS area, we are already adding a second staffer.
Mr. Barron's also a veteran. Thank you for your service. Councilmember Crouch?
I just wanted to recognize Robert. I've met Robert and talked to Robert, and I just wanted to recognize the job that he's doing and all the mapping and the points that we're putting on it. It makes it so much easier for everybody to make decisions and look at a map, and thank you, Sylvia, for doing the same, for getting him here. So thank you for your work. We just appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm happy and glad to be here, glad to be of service to the public, the city, and the council, and the city manager.
Thank you so much. He's provided us the updates. If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Crouch, a second from Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Barron.
Thank you.
Appreciate.
Thank you.
And once again, welcome. We're now moving into the executive session phase. Item 10A, city council shall convene and close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.072 to seek advice of legal counsel and discuss professional engineering contract matters and potential acquisition of real estate related to the wastewater treatment plant number three project and other matters. Item 10B, city council shall convene and close executive session pursuant to Section 551.074 to conduct the first annual performance evaluation the city manager has described in her employment agreement. Item 10C, city council shall convene and close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.072 to seek legal advice of legal counsel regarding real estate acquisition matters in eminent domain as relates to public infrastructure projects. Item 10D, city council shall convene and close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel and discuss professional engineering contract matters and potential acquisition of real estate related to water treatment and other matters. Item 10E, city council shall convene and close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.074 to discuss procedures for legal projects. Item 10F, city council shall convene and close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding the procurement of real estate related to the Lost Pines Art Center. And item 10G, city council shall convene and close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding the procurement of real estate related to 117 Old Austin Highway, 101 Grady Tucker Lane, and Adele Powell Subdivision Lot 3. Counsel, it is 6:14, 6:14, I'm sorry, 7:14, and we are now in executive session. Still not right. It is 9:16. Counsel has returned from executive session. We're now back into regular section, session on items 10A, 10B, 10C, I'm sorry, 10D, 10E, 10F, and 10G. There will be no action. I believe we have a motion on item 10C. Councilmember Lee?
I might go, a motion to approve resolution R-2023-162, authorizing and directing the city manager in consultation with the city attorney's office to develop and implement internal policies, procedures, and practices related to the acquisition of real property interests for public infrastructure projects.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lee. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Crouch. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will read the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes. We are now into item 12. I'll take, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. We stand adjourned. Thank y'all.